Hey guys, welcome back to another study stream. Um, and this one we're gonna be doing self diminishing value colored balls. So let's get started. Um, yes, in this one you have an inventory of different colored balls and there is a customer that wants. Or balls of any color, a customer weirdly values them. Colors ball values, the number of balls that color you have in your inventory, for example, if you have six. Yellow, so they pay six. Okay, so essentially. You have different counts of different color balls and then for that one transaction, the cost is how many you have. You're given an inventory. And orders, which is a total number of balls customer wants, you can sell balls in order, turn the maximum total value. You can attain. The answer maybe too large to turn modulo ten, that's seven. Okay, so. I think it's kind of obvious like what you wanna do, like you always just wanna take the one that costs the most, right? Um, so here it'd be like five, so let's just write some notes always. It's again, it's a good idea to like think of the problem and stuff before jumping in, so you have a good idea cuz there's. I've seen uh from people I've done interviews with and people, other people did stuff where they just jump into the code and then they don't really have a plan and they kinda get stuck. So it's good to have a plan. So basically here like we have four orders, so you're just gonna take the five. And then that'll turn into a four, and then you'll take the four, that'll turn into a three. You take this three, it'll turn into a two. Um, and then you need one more, so you'll just take one of the twos, essentially you get nine plus five, which is fourteen. So you always wanna get the biggest number, so it's, so if the constraints are small, it's a pretty straightforward implementation, just like. Heap, take the biggest value, put in the next one, so on. Um, and same thing for this one. So if we have six, so we'd take like the five, then that five would turn into a four, we take the four, that four would turn into a three, so we'd have this. Then we take the three, that would turn into a two, we take this three, and then two and two. This is what uh nineteen? And so yeah, so it's like pretty straightforward this way, but now let's take a look at the constraints. Okay, inventory ten, the fifth, that's fine. Okay, item. Ten of the ninth. That orders is ten of the ninth. Yeah, so basically if orders like, so imagine um, so the sum of this thing can be like really big. Like it can be more than ten of the ninth, so if you have a big inventory. Um, the, the number of orders could be like ten of the ninth, uh. Uh, yeah, they can be ten of the ninth. And in ten of the ninth, you can't do one order at a time, so we need an optimization. And I don't think you can even, so you, there is like a small optimization, but I don't think that's gonna be enough, so let's say we have like three and then we have like ninety. We know for a fact that like, we're gonna wanna take this until it drops down to three, so we can just see like how many orders we have, if you're like fifty orders. We're just gonna take from here, so we're gonna take ninety, eighty-nine, whatever. But I don't think that's gonna be enough, because if all of these are ten of the ninth, you know, let's call that like ten-nine. Uh, if all of these are ten of the ninth, then what, right? Then you take one here, then one here, then one here, and it wouldn't be good. So then you would still do one order at a time, so you need another solution. And I think I've seen, um, just from doing problems, you know. This is a pretty common pattern where essentially you're just like taking the biggest number and you try, and you try to figure out like how many times you can take it and then you get the rest. But there's kind of another approach you can have here, and I feel like I've done this in a few problems, I think in these videos as well. Where instead of going with the heap where we just take the biggest thing and not just once, but as much as we can. Instead, we can realize that like. We're gonna take some orders and we're always gonna take from the top, right? We're always gonna take the biggest number and so on. So we can kind of instead say, well. There's gonna be some result. Where there's gonna be like some max value in all this inventory. And so what I mean by that is like, let's say we have this inventory. And let's, uh, let me just guess that like the max value is one. For example. In all of these, so my guess is like max value is one. And how many orders would it take for that? So in order for the max value to be one, we'd have to take two from here. And we have to take four from here, so we would need um six orders. And so that is actually correct. And so we can say like, yeah, that does actually match, and there's nothing, uh, the max value can't be smaller, if we try zero, we wouldn't have enough. So then that we know the max value is one, we can say, okay, well, this is two orders, this is four orders, how many orders do we have left? Um, and we have none left, and so the idea is we can basically. Binary search. For max value remaining. And there is an edge case here, um. See if I can. See, this is five, four, three. Yeah, so let's look at this example, so the edge case here is for this two-five, so the max value is going to be two. Uh, yeah. And if we calculate how many orders that is, so this is three orders, right? Five, four, three. But now this turns into a two, and this turns into a two, and we actually have one order left. So basically you're gonna have this case where like the max value is something in your array. And then for the rest, you need to manually go and like decrement by one until you hit what you want. So because we have one extra, we can just say like, okay, we'll turn this into a one and now we have four. So to sum up, we can binary search for the value remaining. Calculate. Extra to fill the orders. And then just take every number. That is the max value. And remove extra until. We run out of extra. Basically, the idea here is like, so just to give an example, so let's say uh, at the end, our max value is like five. And when we do all our minuses, like our values are like zero, one, two, three, four, five. And we need to take like, uh, let's say we need to take four more orders or something. Notice if we needed to take five more orders, uh. Actually, in this case, it wouldn't, yeah, in this case, it actually. If we need to take four more orders, the max value wouldn't be five, because we can just lower this, so let's say we have this case. Basically, the idea is like. For your extra, you're always gonna only take from numbers that are the max value, because if you could have taken from numbers that are smaller. That means the max value would, would have been reduced as well, and that wouldn't be your answer. So if we have like three left over here, we're just gonna say like, okay, for every number that's a five. Let's just remove one until we have zero here, so we'll, so we'll turn this into a four, turn this into a four, turn this into a four, and that gets our extra orders. Um, and, and that extra bit is done in O of N, so now, so basically like to sum up the time complexity. So we're gonna go, we're gonna do O of uh. Like the biggest number in the inventory, I guess, so that's like O of ten to the ninth. Uh, and this is a log, it's a binary search, and log of big numbers is actually very small, like I think I showed this before, you know, log of like. Ten to the three hundred or something is like a thousand, so. This is like basically tiny. Um, and then for each one of these, we have to traverse, that's like N. And where N is the length of the inventory, which is totally fine, so if you can, if you can take, if you see these like ten and nine dimensions, it kinda gives you a hint that um. You can't do like a linear scan, you need some optimizations. Okay, so that's what we're gonna do, so we're gonna have a helper function to check. And then also as far as um, like the sum, the, the last bit here is like. So let's say we have uh an inventory of like ten, and we know we need to take five, so what's the uh sum there? Well, that's just an arithmetic sum essentially, right? So basically, we want the sum of six through ten in O of one. And so that's just a six plus ten, so it's the uh starting number plus the last number. Over two, which gives you the average, and then you multiply by the number in here, which is uh five. So essentially you'll get this. And so this is what, thirty times five, one fifty? Uh, that doesn't seem right. Did I calculate that correctly? It's sixteen, no, it's forty, right? And then let's do the math there real quick, just to confirm. So this is our numbers, so thirteen, twenty-one, thirty, forty. Yeah, so just basic arithmetic sum, uh, pretty useful to know for these problems, so we can get sums and know of one as well. Okay, so let's, now that we have everything, we have enough to code. So first thing, um. Yeah, they tell you like the, 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 the mid number is gonna be. I mean, we can optimize a little, we can get the max of the inventory. Um, to be the like topmost thing, so I guess we can do that, so we can say like int variety equals. I never know the syntax, so might as well try it here, so stream. Inventory, and then I think you can just do max. Optional int to int. Then you can do like else throw. Uh, or else throw or something. And so it'll basically just throw an error. Which is fine, cuz we'll always have a max, cuz we'll never have an empty, I guess if you have an empty inventory, okay. Uh, and the left will just be the zero. Yeah, there we go, finally use that array stream max, okay. Uh, right? Okay, so, oh yeah, I'm gonna turn this off actually, cuz, uh, yeah, so uh basically, the, let's set our result to the right. And then let's just do the standard binary search, and this is a template I like using, so I just do this all the time. Pivot is um, so typically I just do right. Uh, minus left over two plus left to avoid overflow. Uh, I mean, you probably almost never into overflow, but let's say left and right are close to int max, then you wanna do it this way instead of left plus right over two. Uh, cuz that's gonna give you a bigger number. So basically if. So this is where we do the check of like if this is valid, it's like. And so we, we need to give it the, what do we need to give it? We need to get inventory. Orders and our gas, which is P. So if this is the case, then this is gonna be our current max. And we are gonna try smaller maxes, so. Yeah. Otherwise, we try bigger. Alright, um. So then when we have that, and I'll write this at the end. Uh, so then when we have our biggest number. We need to go through all our numbers and we need to. Subtract, uh, we need to get them down to this, and we need to figure out how much we have left over, and we also need a result or profit. Looks like it's an int. Surprising that this can never be. Um, oh, it's modulo, yeah, I was like, I was like, this can definitely overflow, okay. So uh. Ten ninth. Plus seven. Okay, uh. We probably want to. Use a long. So this is like, this is actually not res, this is like max num. Yeah, probably wanna use a long for the result, because uh we can overflow. So basically what we wanna do is, first we wanna do one pass, and then we wanna calculate an extra. Um, so first, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through all the numbers, uh, do we want to sort? I don't think it's needed. Actually. No, I don't think it's needed, because we're gonna, we're gonna reduce everything to our max noun, and then we're only gonna get the extra from the max noun, so that's fine. Alright, so basically we can just do for item. Uh, in inventory. Uh, so basically. If the item is greater than or equal to max noun, we just skip it, because we are only trying to reduce. So we'll continue here. Now, we need to do orders minus what we reduce it down to, so inventory. Or item. Minus max noun, which was like how, how many orders we made. Then we need to calculate the sum here, so res equals. Um. So basically we need to do ten of the ninth. Not ten to the ninth, um. That thing I was saying, right? So the difference between the max noun and what we had. So the small num is max num plus one. The big num is. Uh. Item. Right, so essentially if it, if it goes from ten to five, it's like six to ten. Um, times the length. Which is. Item minus. Max num. So if it goes from ten to five, we have five numbers, right? So I think it's just this, item minus max noun is the length. So yeah, if it goes from like twenty to ten, it's ten as well, so I think that's that. Um, then we want the average, so this. Yeah, and then we shouldn't never get a decimal here. I think, yeah, we can't have a decimal, because we're basically doing a sum of numbers, so this should never be a decimal, uh, we can do. Uh, we can quickly think about like overflow, so this is ten of the ninth. Ten of nine, ten to the ninth doesn't overflow, so I think we're fine there. Uh, then we need to reduce that item in the inventory. Eh, we don't really need to actually, we can just leave it. Yeah, we can leave it, and then we can just um. Like, so basically like, let's say we reduce everything down to like five, and our items are like twenty, ten, fifty, whatever. We can just leave it, and then we can go through it again, and any number that's. Five or bigger, we can do that extra bit, so that's fine. Alright, so we can go through one more time. It's basically same thing, if item is now bigger than. Wait, actually. This needs to be smaller. Yeah. Yeah, so if item is e uh greater than or equal to max them, because we didn't actually decrement it. Then we'll do that operation and. Um, orders grade in zero, we still can make an order. We basically just add, uh. Yeah, actually. So. Thinking about it, I don't even think we need a loop, like if we have four extra. Um, yeah, I don't think we need to actually do a loop, like if we have four extra orders, so let's just show this really quick, um. So let's say here, this is our thing left. If we had more than, if we had four or more extra orders, five would never be the max noun. Um, and so. Think I screwed something up here. I mean, this is, this is definitely like overcomplicating, but let me just make sure my stuff is correct here. So while something, that's good. That's good. Think I need to get rid of that. Okay, so basically, uh. Yeah, basically like if we had four or more extra orders, this would never be the max them. So whatever orders we have left, we have to have that many of that number. So whatever orders we have left, we can just do orders times max them at the end, so let's do that. Alright. And then we can mod it. And then we just return uh integer version of that, yeah, we definitely can get like overflow, cuz now we just need the one, the check function essentially. So uh. Yeah, this is kind of like overcomplicating on some of these things, maybe not so obvious, but it saves us space. I, it's honestly not that complicated either, so yeah, just think about like why we don't have to loop through, and we always have this, and it would make sense. And think about like why, you know, if we had four orders left, this would never be the case. And if we had a case like this or something, and we had like two orders left, this, this, this can't be the max noun. So how many, however many orders we have left is less than the number of the biggest value, otherwise that wouldn't be the biggest value. Okay, uh, so then. Well, let's see. Inventory orders and guess. So now it's pretty straightforward, basically anytime the number is bigger than I guess, we have to see how many times we have to decrement it. And that total has to be less than or equal to orders, so. Uh, can this be? Overflowed, probably? Yeah, so let's do along as well. Alright. Alright, uh, so basically this is just. If item is bigger than uh guess, not uh, yeah, I guess. And we just return. Less than or equal to order, so if it takes more than that to reduce, we can't do it. Alright, let's, let's see what we got here. Uh, what's there? Okay. Um. Wait. Maxnum plus one. Wait, what did I do here? Hold on. Orders. Maxnum plus one, oh, this is just first plus last, right? So this. Alright. Uh, is it the wrong parameters? Identifier expected. Uh, int. Interesting, we got the wrong. Okay, let's uh. Debug. So let's write the maxnum. Start off with the obvious stuff. Okay. Um. Why, oh. Okay. Yeah. Too much switching between different languages, cuz the max noun is five, that's correct. In here, it's, yeah, that part's fine, okay. Okay, so basically, let's make sure that check. Print correctly, why don't you work? Uh. Inventory. So like in this case, in the first example, um, the max num should be. So this goes to four, three, two, maximum should be two. So this should be true. And one should be false, so let's just double check that part works. Okay, one is full, true, and it should be false, so that's not right. Okay, so definitely the check is the problem, okay, let's see why. I'm in inventory, if item is bigger than guess. Uh. So what would happen here? So I guess is one. If item is bigger than guess, total plus equals. Guess minus, oh, wrong way, right? Okay. Oops. Alright, let's see if that fixed it. Yeah. Okay, so obvious overflow. Um. So we have an inventory of, this is what, ten of the ninth? So we have ten to the ninth, and we have ten in the ninth orders. And they say. Twenty-one. Wait, what? How's that even right, actually? Did I misread the problem again? How is it twenty-one? Oh, it's mod. Okay, so, so it's way bigger than twenty-one, but uh. Uh, okay, we never mod it here. Okay. Uh, did I call it something else? Oh, I never give it the. Hmm, actually. Okay. Maybe that overflowed. Did not. Actually. Uh. Can it overflow? Let's do this, just to check if it never overflowed, so we'll just say. If total is less than zero. Print overflow here in total, I guess. Cuz that is an overflow, uh. See. I don't think it will, whoops. Uh. Nope. Okay. So let's figure out where else we have a problem. Um, orders. Res. Is it res? Res is a long. I mean, I guess it has to be here, right? Like if res is less than zero. So like here. Yeah. So what can this be? This is like ten of the ninth. Times ten to the ninth or so. I mean, I guess we can do. Hmm, how do we avoid the overflow? It's actually print the things that it does as well, so we can print um maxnum. Curious, like what actually overflows? Uh, and let's print item. And let's print. Yeah, I think those are fine. Zero. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Oh, I think I know what's happening. So I think the problem is actually not this, the problem is. Max num. Um, like this is an int. And then it converts to a long later, so the way to fix that would be long here. And long here, well, I think just one of them would fix it, but. There we go. Oh, God, another one. This is annoying. Where at? Let's find out, so if. Zero. Again, we'll see if that's where it is. It is again. Well, let's, let's print the max noun again. Jesus. Item. Alright, so here. Why, why didn't it print? Isn't that where it was? I thought it was. Is that not? Oh, might be here. Yeah, let's get rid of this. Let's just confirm that it did. Print negative, which. So it's not here. Interesting. Where else could we have overflow? Total. I mean. It wasn't here, right? No. Where, where else can we even? Here? No. I mean, we can print the max noun, I guess. That's fine. Um. Where the hell? Can it be? Can't be here for sure, right? Like. The heck, this is like a GPTable thing, where like look for overflow, but. Not there. Okay. What in the world? Oh, here. God. So same, same thing, we just convert to a long. Oh my God, what a stupid. Okay. Good, uh, learning experience. So took quite a while. Um, and mostly it was just dealing with these overflow things, so I wanna see how this can be cleaned up, so let's. Do that, got the GPT five, let's see if we have any problems. Make this cleaner, and then I wanna ask like how we, like what we wanna think about to avoid overflow. Because it is kind of annoying, I mean, for what it's worth, this is like a real interview, it wouldn't really matter, because you're never gonna hit these numbers. But just curious in general. Cuz when you have like ten to the ninth, I think. The biggest number you can have is like two or three times ten to the ninth, and when you multiply by each other, like you're getting really close. To getting over, so one way using like big int or whatever it is, to just have like all the space in the world, and other ways use Python, but yeah. Let's take a look, cuz they're using long everywhere. See what's improved. Next profit. Their shoulder price. So they're using. So they're using cool threshold. Mid-low, same. Long, why do they convert it to long? No idea. Profit. Remaining. Count. Okay, so they're using this some thing, so threshold, so they're turning it into a long right away, basically. Okay, some some arithmetic. Yeah, so they they basically just have a helper function, and it's all longs. Um, and then here, total number of units. Okay, so what I wanna say is. Running into the problem often with constraints. Like ten to the ninth. Causing overflow. When I multiply. Et cetera. How do I look out for these? And handle them well. It's pretty obvious when it happens, right? But. You generally wanna like find as good of a plan as you can, and I find most of them, but there were still others, so kinda curious. Promote early. So that is what I was doing. And I didn't notice, yeah, I definitely didn't notice that, like, when you multiply an int by an int and you save the result to a long. Your ins overflow, and then it gets casted, so that's a problem. So promote early makes sense. Um, know the limits. Yeah, so this is what I was saying is. For an int, like ten to the ninth is roughly, it's it's two times ten to the ninth, and long, it's also very close. So so also knowing these values is good. And this is pretty common in, you know, if you use anything that has uh. Like ints and longs and stuff, like Java, C, Go, most languages have that, other than Python and JavaScript. Actually, I think JavaScript also, a number is a long by default, so it doesn't hurt to know these numbers. Um, yeah, so like this is already too big. Use exact. To throw. Hmm, this is interesting. So this is pretty good, actually. Divide factor early once safe, rearranging forms to divide for multiplying. Uh, this is also nice. So like, if I do like ten to the ninth, I'm ten to the ninth, and I do a divide or whatever, do the divide first if you can, that makes sense. Mod math, keep it a long reduce often, yep. When long is enough, use big integer. Yeah, I think this is the other uh. Kind of cleaner approach. If you're kinda getting getting close to limits, she's bigger. I forgot what the big integer dimensions are, but it makes sense. Binary search mid. Yeah, so I was, this is the other thing I was saying, is you don't wanna do low plus high. Over two, because if low and higher close to ten to the ninth, you might get overflow there. Safe math. Add mod, submod. Okay, interesting. So basically, in multiply arithmetic, you just mod everything first, you just mod as much as you can. Uh, or big int or something, pow. So the basic takeaways are mod as much as you can, cast up as much as you can. Um, know the limits, like know the values. And yeah. And then also use like big ints or uh add and subtract. I haven't tried that, but I think that makes a lot of sense, like use these adds and subtracts that throw. Because if it throws, then you know exactly where it uh happened, which is good. Okay. And then, yeah, this 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 thing too. If you have like close to ten to the ninth, just kept promote to long right away, cuz you're gonna get overflow. Okay, so that is gonna be it for this one. Hopefully, it's helpful. This a lot, a lot of it is like Java specific, or I mean, if you use, like I said, I think. This still applies like C plus plus and stuff, cuz you have uh in sixty-four and thirty-two all all stuff. Just not in Python, cuz Python has infinite integer size, so. Um, but yeah, it's gonna be all for this one, so thanks for watching, you know, see you next one.